Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, January 13th at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we have five committees meeting. The first one will be the Committee of the Whole, and we have some information about, related to Ohio House Bill 369. And we have a brief presentation, I believe. I'll turn that to the Councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. Yes, you know, over the holiday, I started engaging a little with Equality Ohio and a couple of the folks there. And so, basically, and this was because of my, my participation in Ohio business competes. And so, this is where businesses actually sign on to support, you know, show support for Equality Ohio, which basically works for rights for LGBTQ issues and also people that support them. So, tonight, we have Dominic Detwiler, who, who works for Equality Ohio here to present. The short of it is, House Bill 369 is coming forward, and they were looking for a resolution of support, which is something that we've already done, a similar, a similar resolution back in 2018. Dominic, please, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, President Nisley and the City Council. I'm gonna try to keep this short, because I know we all have big plans for this evening. I work with Equality Ohio, as Member Kotsas said. I am currently leading the statehouse efforts with the organization. Right now, our big focus is the Ohio Fairness Act, which, as Member Kotsas said, will add sexual orientation and gender expression and identity into Ohio's existing non-discrimination protections. These are protections that Athens has had, Athens has had for a while. Sexual orientation was added in 1998, and gender identity and expression were added in 2010. These are protections that have the support of businesses across the state, across the country. It's also currently paired with, on the Senate side, SB 11. They're identical in their wording. They're just on different sides of the legislature. Right now, 25 cities in Ohio, one of those being Athens, has these protections. One county, Cuyahoga County, and these are protections that exist in 21 states across the country. What we're asking, what is in front of the council is a resolution, just saying that the city supports this. This is something that the city, the council passed in 2018, when we were pushing for similar legislation. And I think really reaffirms council's commitment to protecting LGBT folks, both here in southeastern Ohio and Athens, and across the state. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them, about the bill or potential resolution.
Questions? Comments? Mayor Patterson?
No question, but thank you, Dominic, for bringing this forward.
Okay. All right.
I would think that no questions is a sign of support.
Yes, yes. In fact, actually, I don't know if all members of council, this is, this is the preliminary. Dominic, I have copies that I can pass out as well. Can we do that now? We'll get those distributed.
Or an electronic copy.
Great. Yeah, look for a resolution to be a one-read for next Monday, because the hearings for House Bill 369 start at the end of the month, so this, this will be our, our one shot to get something in front of those, those hearings. So, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee, and those members are Sam Crowell as Chair, Jeff Reisner as Vice Chair, Peter Kotsas and Arian Smedley, additional council members. And we do have a table down here with microphones set up, so that if other council members during the course, they can be recognized by Chairman Crowell, if you have questions or comments that you need, want to make.
Thank you, President Nisley. First on our agenda tonight is the Sourcewell Joint Purchasing Program. Director Hedy of our Engineering Office would like to enter this program. It's a cooperative purchasing program for usually specialized equipment, such as the VAC truck, which is appearing later on tonight's agenda. Council simply needs to allow the engineer to participate in this program. So, we'll be seeing that on Monday night, if there's any discussion.
I assume the program allows for more affordable purchasing of these items? Is that the reason for its existence?
That's what I understand. Director Hedy did say that the Ross County Engineers' Office utilizes this for vehicle and equipment purchases, and if we request it, we can request more information from them if needed. Mayor?
This is not unlike state bid or the U.S. Communities Program that we've entered into before. These are pre-bid items, so that we don't have to go through the lengthy process of putting these out to bid. So, it also expedites our ability to get specialized equipment when we need that, that equipment.
Thanks. Thank you. Any comments from the public, other council members? Okay, we'll move on to second item on the agenda, the Internet Auction. This is an annual approval that council does for being able to sell surplus items on the Internet. I believe we have a number of vehicle disposals, again, later on the agenda tonight, that will be utilizing this program. Any comments from committee on this program? Mayor?
Yeah, I, just real quick, I failed to mention that we have a distinguished guest here tonight, and I promised to get him down to the field by eight o'clock for the national championship. No, I, what I do want to mention real quick is that we still have to go through the council approval process for items that are over $1,000. So, it doesn't mitigate that at all. This is just Internet bid, or Internet sales.
Thank you.
We have been doing this for the last year, I think, so it's an agreement that you'll have to approve every year, but I think it was successful. It was pretty easy to work out. Payments were made to my office before delivery and all that kind of thing, so it's a good program for us.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Fire Truck. This is an authorization to borrow and to appropriate monies. The approval from council to purchase the pumper truck was done last year, ordinance 011819 in November. And this is simply the, the ordinance coming next Monday will be to appropriate and the financing to borrow the money in order to pay for this truck. I believe that we will be looking at, putting up Auditor Five, we're going to borrow $500,000, putting $250,000 up, paying.
Pay it out of our cap fund.
Right, and I believe this saves us $25,000 by doing it this way, from what we thought was a discount, roughly, from the fire chief.
That's true. There will be a savings by, by getting into, there was basically a cost reduction by getting it in. We did get an agreement from the company in 2019, so that we have a placeholder for that, say, the cost savings. I believe it's about $27,000, 25 to 27. Substantial savings.
Okay, this is a pumper truck that we need, Auditor?
Our interest rate is gonna be 1.49%.
1.49.
Again, we're very lucky to have a local financial institution that works with us. I did call one other one, who has a representative who's interested in working with the city, but their lowest quote was almost twice that, which has been my experience in the past. So, I'm always open to trying, but this is a really good rate. We're lucky to have it. Hocking Valley Bank.
Okay, great. Any other comments from the Finance and Personnel Committee?
I guess that, I believe we will be able to take delivery until sometime around September 2020. It's about a nine-month, I believe, time.
Yeah, these aren't vehicles that are just sitting in a car lot somewhere.
Unfortunately.
Okay, well, seeing no other comments on the fire truck issue, there are additional appropriations to discuss. We will be looking at transferring, I believe, or appropriating $36,208 to the General Fund, fire account 101.208, transaction class 500. And this is for extrication tools to be used by the fire department in case of emergency.
Part of this was a grant that we received in 2019, so 75%, with a 25% match on the city side, we received and remitted it already, worth $27,156. So, the remainder would be general.
Auditor, any?
No, that's, the only thing I would add is that most of this is by grant.
Right.
But we, of course, have to pay to pull them out and appropriate the rest. So, it'll be less than $9,000 appropriated from the General Fund.
Okay, so this is a 75%, 25% grant, correct? We are paying, okay? Any other discussion on the?
No, they're needed.
Extrication tools? Yes, they are. Okay, other council members, public? Okay, and another item is appropriation in the Medical Fund, account 866, transaction class 300, for $3,600,000 to pay 2020 medical bills, as the city is self-insured. Auditor, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. I'm not sure how I missed this. I was looking for a lot of other things in the budget before it was passed, and I missed this one, but that is where we make all our payments, since, as you said, we're self-insured, and we, we approve weekly payments for medical treatment that our employees get. And then, we have administrative fees, stock loss fees. And so, last year, we spent, and I think I slipped this out, about $3.564 million, and so, I'd like to appropriate $3.6 million for this year, just rounding up a little bit. So, but we have to have that in there, so we can pay our bills.
Any comments from the committee? Other council members?
Just a clarification. I didn't quite catch those numbers. Is this an increase in the cost, or?
Well, we don't really know exactly what it will cost this year. A lot of it depends on what payments are turned in by our employees. So, yes, it was $3.564, and I'm asked, I'm rounding up to $3.6.
Okay, so not a significant increase.
Well, I mean, it depends on how you look at it, but, you know, it's clearly an expensive fund. A lot of payments. And it depends, you know, some years, just depends on what people have going on, and our costs go up, so we're lucky it go down. I think we did see a decrease this past year with some of the changes that were made in our Medical Fund, as far as certain costs, so hopefully, that'll hold this year, maybe even some more, but we don't really know. So, we'll budget to hopefully cover everything, otherwise, I have to come back and ask for more money. But we do have regular money going into the, the Medical Fund for employee from all the different departments, so that should cover whatever costs we have.
Okay, Mayor, any comments on this?
Nope.
Seeing no other comments on the Medical Fund appropriation, we'll move to the final appropriation for the committee tonight. And this is a fund from the Recreation Fund. It is a appropriation for equipment that was ordered in 2019. Because this amount is over $3,000, it must be, it must have approval from council to pay a prior year's bill out of this year's budget. This is an amount of $7,200. That is for equipment to be installed at the West State Street baseball fields. There are both replacement bases for the fields, as well as what they call a polycap, or the plastic cap that goes over the outfield fences to, to keep players from injuring themselves as they reach over the fence to catch that home run ball. Necessary items, and the Director Moore did indicate that those are in dire need of replacement. So, this is $7,200 from Recreation Fund 270, transaction class 500. Any comments from the committee on this appropriation? Other council members?
Member Fall?
Thank you. I'm wondering how much Sandbox, the league that plays down there, that uses it for games and also kind of races, I guess, whatever they call them, how much they pay per year in fees and such? Yeah, thank you. Bye, next week.
I don't have any information on that. Mayor, do you?
What I can tell you, I believe that this polycap is on Field 1 and Field 2, which are lit fields primarily used for the Corec softball, but also others use it as well. I can tell you that Corec softball does pay a league fee to play, and those monies go into maintenance of the fields, dragging the fields, mowing the grass and whatnot. So, but I can get back to you as to whether these polycaps are applying to the other fields that are primarily used by Sandlot and, and softball as well, youth softball.
Mayor, I did get an email from Director Moore today, and this is enough to replace the existing cap on all 10 fields.
Okay.
The existing is, is 10 to 15 years old, brittle and deteriorating.
I will find out about the fee for you. We are engaging with Sandlot in the not-too-distant future.
Okay, seeing no further comments, we are done with appropriations and transfers. There are additional items on the Finance and Personnel Committee this evening, including a few staffing items. We will be moving to a later date the discussion of the interim Service Safety Director Plan when, when Director Stone is deployed overseas, and as well as the Arts, Parks and Recreation reorganization plan that Director Moore is proposing. We will make one mention, though, of a staffing item, which is to change a title. And, oh, there it is. On the General Fund, under the Cemetery Maintenance Department, changing a title from Recreation Labor Supervisor to a Parks Maintenance Division Manager.
What's the, are you ready for questions?
Now, yes, please.
What's the difference in that, other than the wording?
I believe, and perhaps the mayor can speak to this, but I believe that, well, I'm not, do you, can you speak to this?
Well, it's, I don't know, you've seen the reorg chart for Arts, Parks and Recreation, but basically, it's overseeing the Maintenance Specialist Head Landscape or Park Time Employees, and I believe the Cemetery Employees are already, Cemetery Maintenance falls under that as well.
It's more or less a consolidation.
Sorry?
It's more or less a consolidation of different jobs that are now dispersed. It's gonna be consolidated under one head.
It is, to include seasonal employees.
Exactly.
And it's just, it's a consolidation. It's staying the same pay grade that it is currently, prior to this name change, it was just pay grade eight, so there's no change there.
Got it. This position was recently changed by council later in the year, but they didn't change his title.
Right.
And he had changed grades, you know, additional duties plus supervision, and so, it's, yeah, like the mayor said, it's not changing his pay grade or his pay, but his title, more to fit with what he's actually doing now. Thank you.
With that, seeing no other comments, I believe that concludes Finance and Personnel.
We'll move on to Planning and Development, and that's chaired by Councilmember Fall, Jeff Reisner is Vice Chair, and Sarah Grayson, Arian Smedley, as other council members.
Great. Well, tonight, we have several agenda items, so we'll just jump right in, so all of us can go and do the fair thing that all Louisianans are gonna be doing, go into a bar to watch our favorite people. First was, in 2019, we had given an enhanced easement, a right-of-way easement, to Headstart down where the storage sheds were. That particular project did not pull through. It did not gain grant funding that it needed. So, it's an amendment of that particular ordinance to put in a number, like a placeholder for that particular easement. And then, when somebody else comes forward, we can go through that process. Mayor?
Just real brief, Director Linda Bayliff kind of reached out and said, you know, what is the status of this? And we asked, can, we told Director Bayliff what had happened with Headstart, and said, can we keep this active so that we have this easement? And we were told that, yes, we can. So, if council would move this forward, we'll continue to keep that easement, which certainly frees up that property to be utilized in the future for someone else.
Questions concerning that?
Okay, second item, oh, thank you, Pete.
Now, I thought there was an issue with the property itself, and that, that Headstart couldn't, couldn't, wasn't there, wasn't there like a?
There was reasons why Headstart couldn't use it, yeah. But that doesn't mean that it was, it's not developable. It's just certain requirements for Headstart. So, other questions? Great. So, we'll see that coming forward for that amendment. Next is three, right-of-way, Title 49. Now, this is probably close on to the second year we've been using this process, which is when a right-of-way permit, we used to have 10-year right-of-way revocable license. It became a little difficult and disjointed to be able to keep the track of all those. So, we have developed the process of Title 49, which is, city council has, say, in the initial granting of the right-of-way permit, and then, it's automatically renewed every 10 years, and unless council wants to make action on it, that is an automatic renewal. Now, what would you say is, do you think that this process is okay, or?
We think this process is a great process as we move forward, and how do we deal with it? Because, as you mentioned, it used to be the revocable license, which, this just streamlines it.
So, so that's one background on, on that. And I also agree, I think that it's much more efficient use of the revocable way permit. So, we have three. One is 338 West State Street. This is going to be a location sign, which probably 90% of our revocable licenses are. So, is there any particular question about this one? I'll go to the next one, which is a special right-of-way permit for a historical marker.
What's it locating?
It's the Eco Farm for Ohio University.
Okay.
So, and they have one there, it's just kind of, so, that's exciting.
Is it gonna be a big sign?
May I speak to this?
Yes.
So, this is for the Ohio Student Farm. There is no sign there, so if you know the Circle Garden back behind the Innovation Center, where the students have plots, and then also Dr. Art Tracy's High Tunnels in the other area, and Dr. Teresa Moran and Gwen Scott from Culinary Services have been working with Dr. Tracy in the Food Studies Program to really enhance the work of the farm, and they finally got an address and some money to have a sign. So, they are very happy, and we're all very happy, that the Ohio Student Farm will have a sign on West State Street.
And we do have a sample, we have an illustration on the Google Drive of what the signs gonna look like.
And it will be a nice wayfinding, it's another, if people, the Circle Garden, which is also known as, as the Mystery Garden to many people, is really an interesting project that he's been doing with students for years and years. It's magical, so.
I'm just curious, in a case like this, will the sign be in the style of Ohio University signs or city signs?
Ohio University.
Okay.
The wayfinding process that they have. So, other questions? Great, okay. Title 49 for Mulberry near Baker Junction, South Port, that area, for a historical marker. And I know that the Historical Commission met this afternoon, that they do wanna report on the signage and specialness of it, or should we do that next week? For language?
It is special. This is for the Lynching Memorial, for Christopher Davis, so it's very appropriate for those who attended the ceremony last year. There will be another ceremony with the dedication of this as well, but this is for the special right-of-way.
Right, and it will come up next week with Martin Luther King's. So, yes, any questions about that one?
And we do have a sample illustration of that, and that's like the other historic markers that are designated around the city and around the state.
And it's nice, we have the Port Street bookend now with, with historical markers. And then, the last agenda item is Title 49, and this is on 40 Hooper Street. We have the gentleman who is doing the development. It's a special right-of-way for parking and drive along undeveloped alleyway, and to use green space for a lot-size requirement for an affordable and accessible two-bedroom dwelling on 40 Hooper. So, if you have the person, yes, please. And if there's any questions concerning this, I know that Sarah, being the affordable housing person, this is very exciting for.
And if you could give us your name and address and affiliation.
Yeah, I'm Henry Levine, and I live in Mecks County, 37510 Snowville Road, in Albany, Ohio. And what did you need, though?
Just that, your general idea of, why are the reasons you need this special right-of-way?
Yeah, in the 80s, the, the city bought the, the front of my, of the property to put in a exit ramp from when they were putting the freeway in, but they never, they never put an exit ramp there, so they didn't require that lane. But it makes my property not large enough for, it doesn't meet the 8,000 square feet requirement for two rental properties. There is a second building on the property that already has electric to it, but it's completely inaccessible, because the, the hill from Hooper Street is, you know, pretty straight up. But there is the undeveloped alleyway that runs behind the, the house, and there's University Courtyard Apartments has a right-of-way that goes to that alley, and my attorney has talked to them, and they're willing to give me an easement to access that alleyway. And I'm gonna have to do some grading in the alley and some landscaping to, to make it accessible, but they seem minimal to it. Also, there's a possibility of buying the next two properties over, and there's a footing for an additional house in that area as well. So I'm just, you know.
Great. So, questions? Mayor?
I don't have a question. Just to help you a little bit in working through this, currently, that particular lot at 40 Hooper, it would be exceeding the 60% lot coverage to add something. However, there is a director's, a director's entry from ODOT, when ODOT way back in the day built the Highway 33 and rerouted things, that there, ODOT did acquire that land, and then, once no longer needed, ODOT sold it to the City of Athens. So basically, the front of the property, the frontage on this particular property is city property, but it's not being used for anything other than the driveway onto the property. One of the things, too, to share with council is that we did research this, we, there is a reversion clause with this property, so therefore, the city can't sell any of these director's entry properties, because we have several of them along Hooper. But to be, have this particular parcel or piece included into the overall footage or acreage for the property itself, from the city's perspective, doesn't seem to be a problem.
Right. And hence the special part of this, but, so. One thing that the city administration does do when they go through the Title 49 is all the different departments and questions are answered. So this is something that the administration has been working with you on, and so now it's going to now go before council through the three readings. So, is there any other questions?
So what's labeled on the map that we see that was prepared on May 30th is labeled "State of Ohio" next to the three outlined, is actually owned by the city. And so it's just that the map.
It was excess, the state didn't need it, and so it sold it to the city. But again, there is that reversion clause in there.
Can you remind me what a reversion clause is?
It's basically where if we ever choose to dispose of that property, sell the property, it would have to be sold back to the state, or the state would take it back. We can't.
Wouldn't that have an impact on any resale of the property from your side?
Not if they're.
I mean, if your entrance is owned by the city at the moment, and the city, for whatever reason, and the future council administration tried to dispose of it, and the state of Ohio said, "I want it back," now they control it, which means they could essentially shut you down, if the state chose to do so.
Yeah, actually, the access to the property would be through the undeveloped alley, which is, I guess, owned by the city. And the front of the property is.
And there's a reversion clause on that? I mean, that's, that's safe.
No, it's the frontage on Hooper, but Councilmember Reiser, you know, yes, I suppose, councils will change in the future, mayors will change in the future, but, you know, if you look at this particular parcel, is it on, you know, right literally in front of the property on Hooper?
There's really no use for that section of property.
And the easement normally goes with the property, so even if it had an easement, it would probably go with the property, and whoever gets that property would have to pay attention to it, so.
I understand that, and I'm sure the banks do, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Great, thank you, and we'll bring up next week.
Thanks.
Okay, that's the end of my agenda items.
City and Safety Services are up next, with Sarah Grace as chair, Chris Collins vice chair, and Beth Plow.
Hey, I can leave.
You can leave.
Okay, we have a bit of a list of things this evening. Starting off, a request from our Director of Public Works and City Engineer Bob Hetty for approval of disposition of a list of vehicles that, I spoke with him this afternoon, and he was explaining that all of these vehicles are on the list for age or function reasons, and that for the process of when a vehicle actually needs to be replaced, it's much easier for them to find out trade-in value if council has already approved the disposition of the vehicle. So we have a 2007 Ford Expedition, a 2003 Chevy S10, a 1993 Ford Kelly Cresswell 35C paint truck, a 2008 GMC C4500 bucket truck, a 1998 Case Super L backhoe, a 1985 Eager Beaver roller, which my daughter saw that one, and she said, "I don't believe that's a real thing, you just made that up." But it's a small roller for smoothing out potholes, and, but it's been in use since 1985, and it's served its time. A 1997 Case 721B front-end loader, a 1977 International C1850 leaver, a 1989 American Road Machinery MDL-ALC17 leaver, a 1997 Ford CF8000 leaver, a 2002 Dodge Caravan, a 2002 Chevy Blazer, a 2002 Ford F550, a 1991 International 4900 dump truck, and a 2005 Ford F350. So if anyone has any particular questions about the reason for disposition of any of those particular vehicles, I assured Mr. Hetty that I would contact him and follow up with specifics, but it's, they're all well-used vehicles.
And then there are the four other.
This was the.
Oh, these are.
Oh, this, okay. So we have the police department vehicles also. I know the first one, the 2007 Ford Expedition, was a fire chief's vehicle that's up to 173,000 miles. So it's the ninth, okay, is it? And the police department also has a 1990 Ford F150, a 2008 Chevy Aveo, right, yes, a 2006 Honda Accord, and a 2004 Chevy Impala. So, a lot of old vehicles, yes.
One of the processes that usually goes through for disposal of them is we ask around, see if anybody wants them. So that is the process, once we say you can dispose of them. So we do try to give gently-used ones to people and other nonprofits sort of thing. I expect some, most of these have not been gently-used, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding vehicles? Okay. The next thing on the agenda this evening is that the city water treatment plant is needing to acquire a new contract for water softening salt. So we will need to authorize our Service Safety Director to seek and accept bids for new, a new contract for salt. And they did inquire, we're unable to renew for the 2020 year at the 2019 rate. Salt prices have gone up, but we have a good store right now, so we have time to put this out and try to get good prices. And Mr. Hetty did say he's going to do some research and see if there are any seasonal fluctuations in water softening salt, like there are with road salt, because it is something that we can purchase at the, hopefully, the most affordable time. And, but they would like authorization for up to $165,000. And, yes.
How many tons is that?
That will be, well, I didn't do the math. If you want to reverse it, it's estimated at $130 a ton, and for the number of tons they put out, 1,110 tons. So, it's a lot of salt.
Needed. Much needed.
Yes.
Unlike our road salt right now.
Yes, but, we can't, yeah, we probably can't swap and use our road salt in our water treatment.
Let's not do that.
The next item is something that is required of the city by the Ohio EPA, and we are required to exercise our water valves. And for this, we need a valve exercising machine. The money for this expense was already put into the budget in 2019, I believe, and, but we need to authorize the expenditure, and this is a $90,000 piece of equipment. Mayor?
Just a little background, typically, what has been done in the past is exercise the valves, which is required. We were doing it by hand, and when that happens, that's when problems occur to where unfortunately, there can be over-torquing with a stuck valve, and the valves will break, which leads to even greater expense than the cost of this particular valve exercising piece of equipment. And again, as you mentioned, EPA is requiring this, so this is a good investment. You know, I think that in the long run, a lot of our assets underground won't need to be replaced, because this machine will carefully and gently exercise those valves without breaking the valve.
I thought it was sort of an interesting New Year's resolution. It's like, yeah, our valves.
Slimmed valves, trimmed valves.
I see a lot of good jokes out of that.
Yes.
I have a serious question, though, for change. If the valves that are being tested, some fail or don't meet the specifications that are necessary, what is the protocol?
Then they'll be replaced. But these are, these are just exercising them episodically, just to make sure that they don't fail.
Right.
But if one fails, the.
Or it gives indication that it will, then the protocol is just swap it out, get a new one.
Yeah.
There's no really way to repair it, repair them, I would think.
No, I mean, again, if a valve snaps or breaks or will not unseat, then.
Expensive.
Yes.
I don't know if you said this, but according to my notes from Andy, the amount they budgeted is $90,000.
Yes. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, next thing is a vacuum truck replacement. And our current vacuum truck is a 1990 model that has been, it still runs, but the vacuum portion apparently does not function and breaks down every time it is used right now. So it, knowing this, they put this vehicle on the list, and it has been approved for disposal already. It was approved for disposal last year, but now the city administration is asking that we approve financing to purchase a new one, and this will be a $400,000 appropriation that will be divided between the sewer stormwater fund and the sewer fund, and I believe Mr. Hetty said also the water fund, because this truck is used, but I don't know the exact breakdown, because that was just added. It was going to just be two funds, and then there's some more calculating. Do you have it now?
Yeah, well, unless they've changed it. $300,000 from the stormwater fund, 755, and then $50,000 from water and $50,000 from sewer.
This is a critical piece of equipment for the city.
Yeah.
It's, this is old, as you mentioned, 1990, it's on its last leg, literally. And this is also something that we're looking to go through Sourcewell, which we talked about at the beginning of session tonight, so.
Yeah. Any other questions about the vacuum truck? The final item is a dump truck chassis. And once again, the previous or the currently in-use dump truck is, has already been approved for disposition. It was approved last year, because it is no longer running, and it was a 2001. This vehicle is what is used for asphalt repair, asphalt patching in our city streets, so it's definitely going to be needed come spring. And so they're estimating $70,000 for this, and would also like to go through the Sourcewell acquisition process for the dump truck chassis. And apparently, the portions of the dump truck are purchased separately. So this is just for the chassis.
Will this be a heated truck bed? Or, I know we have one.
I don't know, yeah, I mean, good question. I will follow up on that, as to whether the bed is heated for the asphalt, if it's hot mix.
I know we have one.
The, I think the bed is purchased separately, and it was going to likely be less than the $50,000 limit, so they, Mr. Hetty was indicating they could purchase that without the separate council approval, so, but that would be interesting to know. Any other questions? Yes, Mayor?
Not a question, just a comment about vehicles. And EPW, their plan is to also incorporate electric vehicles into some of their jobber vehicles down there, some of the vehicles they use, just to get out to construction sites and whatnot, since we're talking vehicles.
Good to know, thank you. That's all I have for this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Transportation Committee with Councilmember Potzis as chair, Sam McCollough as vice chair, and Beth Plow.
And I have just three topics to, three bullet points to speak to tonight, and actually, two of them are connected, they're intertwined. And that's the first one here, so that's the Safe Routes to School, Grant Street sidewalk, and also the ODOT LPA Project Safe Routes to School. So, members of council, on January 3rd, you received an email from EPW engineer Jessica Dine that showed us the stage-three plans of this, of this project, which is adding sidewalks onto the eastern side of Grant Street. And this is money that is left over from a 2016 Safe Routes to School grant that we were successful in securing. This money needs to be spent, or else ODOT gets dinged, and then the city would also then have a bad mark going forward on some future projects. So they've, they've gone forward, and they've looked at this street, and have come up with what they feel is kind of the best, best working within the right-of-way. There was even some discussion about, about looking at property acquisition in order to try to add additional features, but they found that the time and the money being spent to that, to that type of effort on this street wasn't going to work within the timeline. So we have a, we have a sidewalk that's being added to the street, which right now, we don't have one. And the ODOT is the, is the agency that would be, would be paying the contracts. There, that LPA agreement, which was, it's like a 19-page, or it's also on your drive, and it is, it's a little different than what I've seen most of our LPA agreements, in that this one is a direct pay. The, the city would, would bid the project out, contractors would do the work, and then we notify ODOT, and then they pay directly to the, to the contractors. And I was stumbling a little bit on that, because we were asking for allocation of about $194,000 and some change from the Small Cities Fund. And I kept saying, well, why are we doing that? When ODOT's paying the bills, why are we allocating funds from that? But this is, I was, it was explained to me today that this is kind of just housekeeping, and I think in the auditor kind of.
Well, yes.
Yes.
We have to show it in our books, even if we don't ever lay our hands on the money. We've had other agreements like this. So we have to appropriate it ahead of time, so that it can be approved to be paid. I don't know really any better way to explain it, but it is, it's just bookkeeping. So we have to show it coming in and going out, and in our books, and so we have to appropriate it upfront, even though we will get, it's. And so we have to appropriate it upfront, even though we will get it's kind of like a reimbursement fund or opposite where we have to appropriate it and spend it and then we get reimbursed. Well, in this one, you know, it's being the work's being done and we're being charged and then we request the money and then they get paid directly. And it's just like you said, they do it differently, different times. And but yeah, we have to show it in our books because it is it's our, you know, money.
It's money spent.
Our expense.
And it would also give us an idea of what a project costs and historically the kinds of improvements made in the city, so.
Yeah, we have to show what money is being spent in the city. That's part of when we go through our audit and we do our federal schedule as we're federal dollars, but we have to we're accountable to all of our granters who do audits sporadically and the money is granted to us. And so it has to go through our books whether we ever lay hands on it or not.
And so the project, I'm sorry, the project is a midsummer completion date. Also, even though these are stage three drawings, we still there is still an open comment period up until at least February 3rd. So this has not gone out to bid or anything like that. We still have there's still time for discussion on this. Member McCollum?
Thank you, Member Cottis. Just a couple of quick questions. This is in my general neighborhood and so I go by the street a lot and knowing that this project was coming up, I had been thinking about it for some time and I just was under the assumption that the sidewalk would be on the west side of the street and not the east side of the street. Do you have any idea why they've chosen and I'm not an engineer, I'm not going to pretend that that I know the right answer for this, but I just assumed it would be on the other side of the street? Do you know why?
Mayor?
Bolina. So Bolina comes into Grant. Right. Right in the center of a block. And so it's easier to to have the have the sidewalk on the west side because it's continuous through there. There is an alley, so there will be a curb cut for that alley to come off, but it was just it was an easier design to come to come up with. And it kind of fit with what we've got as being one way through there right now anyway, which we're gonna maintain one way on Grant. We're not gonna transition back to two-way. But it is on the Bolina side of the- That's east side. Right. That's where I think they're putting the sidewalk and I assumed it would be on the other side. As I understand it, it's gonna be on the west side. It will be- That's what I thought too, but if you look carefully at the plans, I think it's on the other side, which surprised me because of the electrics all there. Sure. So when I saw that, I said, okay, of course, it's gonna be in there. It looks like there's space on the other side and there's Bolina. So I was just confused by that. And I and I can contact the the engineer, but I didn't know if Member Cottis had asked this question already. It's just interesting to me. It came up in safety this morning, actually in planning, in staff meeting and during staff meeting. It was I asked that same question and what I was told is it's going to be on the west side. I'll look at the plans again and I'm it's a little bit makes me a little bit dizzy looking at the plans. And at first I was looking at them and I wasn't oriented correctly. And then I think I figured out my orientation and I was surprised to see it was on the other side. But it doesn't connect to a sidewalk on Morris because there isn't one. It's just a little bit odd. So I hope I'm wrong because it doesn't make sense to me the way I think I read the plans.
Yep. Go ahead, please. And I was under the same understanding as you.
So we're on 24 Morris Avenue. I live about a block from the street. I've also had my eye on it for a while as it's been converted to one way just after I moved into my house, actually. So significant change in the neighborhood. I was also confused by the drawings and trying to figure out which side of the street it was on. What made me realize is they're putting a temporary sidewalk in during the construction on the west side. I'm like, how is that going on the west side if that's where they're constructing it? I'm like, oh, hold it. They're constructing it on the east side. So I don't understand the justification for putting it on the east side because it's intersected by Boliana. It doesn't connect anything on Morris. You have to cross the street somewhere to get to it on that end. On the other end, if you're going to Jackie O's Tap Room or crossing the street to Sonic or anything else down, any of the other businesses down Stimson, you have to cross again on Grant. So there's three street crossings to use a sidewalk if it's on that side. I don't think it makes sense. But again, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know for sure, but I would like to hear more analysis about this and see if it makes sense the way it's configured in the plans currently.
I'm thinking about it. Maybe there's something in there too about a special kind of stormwater drain, the way it's crested or something. And it may be because they want the water to go a certain way. I don't know, but I would just like to find out. I will get you the details.
Okay. Yeah.
Another question that I have had people who live in the near east side neighborhood ask me is how clearly it will be marked one way on a permanent basis? Because right now, some people go the wrong way on that little street and they just are afraid it's dangerous. But they don't know, you know, would it be what is it gonna look like if there's some sort of permanent indication that it's a one-way street?
I know that the in discussions with Jessica Dine today, some of the the road width is going to go down to about 11 feet.
Okay.
So I think that'll make-
Should make it much clearer.
Yeah. Or at least you'll you'll find out the hard way.
I think it'll be well-marked.
Okay.
Okay. And so the last the last point I have, this one is straightforward. ODOT is once again performing some bridge painting on some of their bridges that are within the city limits, so we need to do an LPA agreement. These two bridges in particular are US 50 as it crosses over US 33 on the south side of town, what would be called Kimes Curve. So those two bridges are slated to be painted. I don't have a start date for the project, but you know, as usual, ODOT is covering this this project 100% and just needs us to sign off. Any questions on that? With that, we are done.
We are. Yes. Mayor Patterson?
I just want to thank council for allowing me to get Joe Burrow down to the field for the eight o'clock kickoff.
And with that-
Yeah. You do it, Joe.
We all wish wish them well tonight, so we're journeying at 7:59 PM. Thank you very much.